We have a cameraman? Yes, we're on. I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us. Oh, hey, we've got, we've got Boy Scouts in the audience. What was I thinking? Would you please come forward and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. The roll, please. Belkey.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Kenny. Marques.
Here.
MacIver.
Here.
Shower.
Here.
Six present. We have a quorum. The next item of the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Does anyone in the audience want to address the city council? It doesn't have to be an item that's on the agenda this evening, but that you wanted to address and get some information from the council on. Does anybody in the audience want to address the council at this point? Then we'll move on to approval of the minutes of June 6, 2016. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Any additions or deletions for the clerk? Then the roll, please. Marques.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
MacIver.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Six ayes. The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any of the aldermen have communications to share? Alderman Clistic?
Thank you, Mayor, madam. I received communications from the Farmdale Terrace Condo Minimum Association. A big thank you to the municipal services team for taking care of some branches and some growth that was in a swallow hole that they took care of. So, thanks again from Farmdale condo association.
Great. Always glad to hear good news. Any other communications to share? And let's move on to the mayor's report. And this is a, it gives me great pleasure to, number first item under the agenda is to not only honor one Eagle Scout this evening, but four. One of the, one of the young men in the audience, or maybe, was it just one of you that came with the invitation?
Two.
Two, okay. They came to me with a written invitation to attend their Court of Honor, which was the weekend of Memorial Day. I was not able to attend that Court of Honor, but I, at that time, I let them know that we would, we would love to recognize them here at a city council meeting. So with that said, I'd like to do, recognize one Eagle Scout at a time, and I'll start out with Brian. Brian, all, by the way, all four of these young men are Darien residents, too, which even makes it even better that we're recognizing them. All of, all of their accomplishments are wonderful, but one project that Brian, that Brian did was he, he, his service project was at the Indian Prairie Public Library, and he reupholstered and tightened chairs to make them nicer and more stable, was your project. So I'd like to present you with your letter of commendation and also a pin from the city of Darien and say congratulations.
Thank you.
On the job well done. And if you'd like to say a few words?
I don't know, sir.
Brian, okay. Should I brag about you at all? Should I tell some of the things you've done?
If you want to.
Okay, all right. You can sit down and I'll just brag about you a little bit. All the, the three, the three scouts that are here this evening are all with their scout master, Todd.
I'm going to ruin your last name, Halmanerizer.
Okay, was I close?
Yes.
All right. His son Connor is not able to be with us this evening, so he's going to take his recognition with him. But for Brian, he joined Troop 101 in 2011 after being a Wee-Below in PAC 236. He's held leadership roles as patrol leader, troop guide, librarian, and in charge of flags. He earned his SCUBA certification and became a certified emergency medical responder. He participated in 52 nights of camping, including summer camps and special trips, with canoeing and backpacking, and he's provided more than 60 hours of community service. Congratulations, Brian, for all of, all that you've done. I'd like to bring up Dean Driggers next. Dean was, his project was to build six activity boxes for Alzheimer's and dementia patients at Smith Village Senior Living Center, and congratulations on your, becoming an Eagle Scout. Do you want to talk about your, oh, I'm sorry, got to give you your letter and a pin first, and then you can tell, do you want to talk to?
I'd like to.
Okay. Okay. I'd like to know what his activity box is, so would you mind going up to the podium and telling us?
All right, so, yeah, my name's Dean Driggers. I made six activity boxes for Alzheimer's and dementia patients. They're kind of like a toolbox for, like, for Alzheimer's and dementia, where we made them out of cherry wood that I actually got from our woods that we have in Wisconsin, which is kind of cool. A tree had fallen down and made it into wood, and it was, like, cleaned and cleaned up and looked nice, and then we made them, they were about a foot by six inches by seven inches, and there was 10 different doors on them with different latches and hinges that they could open and just work with.
Yeah.
So it would help them with their Alzheimer's or dementia.
Uh-huh. Well, congratulations.
And I drove them down, and that was, I did.
Okay, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
For Dean, he started scouting back in 2005 as a wolf with PAC 36, and then he went over in 2008 to Arrow of Light and joined Troop 101. He's held leadership roles as senior patrol leader, assistant senior patrol leader, quartermaster and assistant patrol leader. He earned 23 merit badges and his BSA in SCUBA and CPR. And he participated in 77 nights of camping, which included summer, winter, and high adventure camping with canoeing, diving, backpacking, and hiking, and he's provided more than 290 hours of community service. So congratulations, Dean, on, on all of that, of that accomplishment. Thomas, do you want to be the next person that we'd like to recognize? And for your service project, you worked at Lace Elementary School, which included removing overgrown and dead vegetation and debris, adding mulch, painting the wood fence, and constructing a brick border around the school's main sign. Congratulations on your project, too.
Okay.
Oh, did I give you, I gave you the wrong letter? Did I give you the wrong letter? I think, what letter? Yeah, I just gave you the paper copy. That's not the official one. Okay.
Hello, I'm Thomas. As you know, I had my project at Lace Elementary School. She, Ms. Dwyer is right here. She helped me with everything. She helped pay for it and had, get everything prepared. We removed old brush leaves, everything that was in there that made it look not the best, and we replaced it with mulch, painted everything, made it look nice and pretty. And that was pretty much it.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thanks, Thomas. Congratulations. For Thomas, he joined Troop 101 in 2009 after graduating from Cub Scout PAC 236 as a second year Wee-Below with Arrow of Light. He held leadership roles as patrol leader, troop webmaster, and troop guide. He's earned 35 merit badges and became a certified SCUBA diver, advanced open water diver, and certified emergency medical responder. He participated in 77 nights of camping, which included several canoeing, backpacking, and diving trips, and he's provided 91 hours of community service. So all of, all of you young men have done outstanding, outstanding accomplishments, and so much that you've given back to our community. You are, you are commended for all of your efforts for the city of, well, for the city of Darien. Thank you. And Todd, great job as, as scout.
Tim.
I'm sorry, Todd. I'm sorry. Let me describe your son Connor.
Thank you.
Okay. His project was to build three picnic tables for the volunteers that feed my starving children while, for volunteers during their worktime breaks. And for him, he joined Troop 101 in 2009 after graduating from Cub Scout PAC 97 as a second year Wee-Below with Arrow of Light, held leadership roles in ASPL, patrol leader, troop guide, and den chief, earned 26 merit badges in addition to wilderness survival, aviation, climbing, and SCUBA certification. He participated in 61 nights of camping, which included several camps and trips with backpacking and diving, and he provided 63 hours of community service. So all, all of these young men are going on to college. I saw each one of you, a few of you have already started on your college degrees, from what I recall. Are you all Hinsdale? Nope, some are Downers South graduates. Okay. Connor's from Hinsdale South. Tom, you're Downers Grove South. Dean, you're Hinsdale South, and Brian, you're, you're Downers Grove South. So congratulations to all of you. Thank you for attending, and how did your, your honor court go?
Went really well.
It was fun. Our particip, yes, a lot of, it's quite, it's, has anybody ever gone to one of their honor courts?
I've been to one, a couple.
Okay.
Including mine, as well.
Including yours. How many, how many Eagle Scouts do we have here? Just one?
Just one.
Wow, wow. Well, you just, you just went into a very elite group of gentlemen, becoming an Eagle Scout. I think if you look at the resumes of some of our industry leaders, I'm not looking at you, if I know me.
That was a girl scout.
Our industry leaders, I would find, I would guess you'd find Eagle Scout as one of their accomplishments, so congratulations again, and thank you for being here this evening. The next under, item under the mayor's report is the approval of the appointment of Jerry McDonald to our police pension board. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Belkey. Jerry comes to us with a great resume. He's been very involved in the community, and he happens to be a resident of Alderman MacIver's ward, if I recall. So with that said, do I have, do, any comments? All right, then I would like to ask for the roll, please. MacIver.
Aye.
Belkey.
Aye.
Clistic.
Aye.
Marques.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Shower.
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent. Jerry, would you come forward to be sworn in? You have to sign some stuff. Well, we'll swear you in first. I, and state your name.
I, Jerry McDonald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Police Pension Board trustee.
Police Pension Board trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
And if you can sign yet for me, and then this is yours, and then everybody would like to congratulate. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry, for offering. Now, I think if we talk to this guy first, if not already, have you already?
I'd give him.
Okay. Okay. The next item under, under the mayor's report is Darien Chamber update. I think Claire Bon Giovanni is here this evening.
She's got a big check.
And a very big check, just for me. Oh, pictures?
Good evening, everyone. The Darien Chamber of Commerce has a new logo that I wanted to share with everyone tonight. We have incorporated the clock tower into our logo, and we're going to continue to update and brand all of our marketing material to include the, the new logo with the clock tower. The Darien Chamber of Commerce hired Darien resident Claire Wagner as our summer intern. Claire will be a senior at Downers Grove South in the fall. Claire is coordinating and executing the DCC membership crusade. Claire has been out visiting prospective members along with Patty Crooks, Membership Development Coordinator, and Darien Chamber Board of Directors. The Darien Chamber invites all prospective businesses to join the Chamber and be part of the largest business organization in the city of Darien. The Darien Chamber is excited to announce that the first Brew and Chew Indoor Ale Fest was a success. Save the date for the second Brew and Chew Indoor Ale Fest, which will be held at Chucks on April 22, 2017. The next DCC Coffee Connection Early Morning Networking will be held on June 28, 8:00 AM, at First American Bank located at 2013 75th Street in Darien. Register online at darienchamber.com. The Darien Chamber of Commerce is participating in the annual Darien Club, Darien Lions Club Parade on July 4. The parade begins at 9:30 AM in the Jewel Parking Lot and will proceed north on Cass Avenue to 71st Street, then head east to Claridan Hills Road, ending at Hinsdale South High School. Darien Chamber Women in Business is hosting a luncheon on July 19 at Gordon Beers Brewery, Designing Your Legacy, presented by author, professional keynote speaker, organizing coach, and entrepreneur Angie Ingstrom. Register online at darienchamber.com. Darien Chamber Women in Business will celebrate the third annual Paint the Town Pink in October. We invite all residents and businesses in Darien to paint the town pink and support breast cancer research. Save the date for the kickoff event, September 30 at 6:00 PM under the clock tower, which will include the pink ribbon lighting ceremony. Earlier this year, the city of Darien notified the Darien Chamber due to budget cuts, they are no longer able to provide police protection barricades and services from public works for Darien Fest. The Chamber is now responsible for covering all these expenses. To not disappoint the community, the businesses, and organizations that benefit from the event, we are planning a one-day Darien Fest on Saturday, September 10, from 1:00 PM to 10:30 PM. Featured will be the same activities as we have enjoyed in the past, from carnival rides and music to food beverages, Darien Women in Business Adirondack Chair Auction, Business Expo, and even the pep parade. The Darien VFW Post 2838 will be at Darien Community Park all weekend, selling tickets for their annual 50/50 raffle. The carnival will run Friday, Saturday, and Sunday for the weekend. Sponsorship opportunities for Darien Fest are available. Please call the Chamber office at 968-0004. Save the date for the third annual Dancing with the Chamber Stars, which will be held November 10 at Ashton Place. We are looking for celebrity dancers. Hint, anyone who's interested can call me at the Chamber office. The 16th Annual Darien Dash had a record number of runners. 465 runners ran the race. A heartfelt thank you to all of our runners, partners, and sponsors. A special thank you to the city of Darien, Darien Park District, Darien Police Department, Steve Hyatt, and the Darien Lions Club for all their help on race day. Thank you to Mayor Kathleen Weaver, Darien VFW Post 2838, and Eddie Anderson for assistance with opening ceremony. A special thank you to Chris San for his kind hospitality. Tonight, the Darien Chamber is very excited to present the awards for Lace School and the Gift of Carl Foundation. Both of the school and the organization qualified. Lace had over 70 runners, and the Gift of Carl had close to 60 runners. You needed 35 to qualify. At this time, I would like to invite Shar and Rob Viom to step up, and the principal of Lace School, Erin Dwyer, to present the check.
On behalf of the Darien Chamber, we would like to present, on behalf of the Darien Chamber, we would like to present each organization $2,000 for their assistance in getting registrations from the organization and the school.
Congratulations. Claire, if I could impose upon you, I'd like to use your camera. I failed to make sure we had a picture of the, the Eagle Scouts, yeah.
Okay, we also have real checks here.
Real, I saw.
So I'd like to present $2,000 to the Gift of Carl Foundation.
Thank you, Claire. Congratulations.
And I'd like to present $2,000 to Lace School.
Thank you so much.
And at this time, I'm going to have each, the organization and the school, say a few words.
Okay.
On behalf of the students and staff of Lace School, I just want to thank the Chamber of Commerce for allowing us to partake in the Darien Dash. We did have a record number of students participate in their families. We have three teachers who host a running club during the school year, and they train to run a mile, and then they are encouraged to go and participate in the Darien Dash. So we're excited that the parents are taking that opportunity. As I always tell my parents at school, it does truly take a village to raise a child, and Darien is a wonderful place for our students to be. I am the principal of the third through fifth grade building in District 61, and our students are just so lucky for the many opportunities that there are here in the village. I actually started my teaching career here in Darien, left, and then came back because of what a special place Darien is. So I just want to thank everybody for everything that you do for our students, from the Gift of Carl, to the Boy Scouts, to the Lions Club, to the village. Thank you so much. We couldn't do it without you. So this will go into the hands of our students and give them some more opportunities that we're not able to partake in without this. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm Rob Viom. I'm with her, with my wife Charlene. We're with the Gift of Carl Foundation. We're proud members of the Darien Chamber of Commerce and long residents of Darien. Been involved in a lot of community activities, and a lot of you know, we provide educational opportunities in theater arts, and literacy, and music, and environmental awareness, and we're just very humbled to be part of this community and be able to provide back to all of you for what we are able to do in our son Carl's memory. So thank you very much.
Don't leave yet. I was teasing Rob about his new hairdo, and why don't you tell, I mean, I think it's terrific what you're doing, yeah. Why don't you tell us why you're letting your hair grow that long?
Well, deep down inside, I'm trying to save on barber costs. But Shar and I have a very good friend who has been battling successfully breast cancer, and I lost all, all her hair through chemotherapy, and so I'm going to grow my hair long enough so I can donate it. So we'll see how that goes. I don't know what I should have done during the summer, but it's a different issue. So.
Thank you very much for what you do, for the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to both. And Shar and Rob have been on the Darien Dash Committee the last couple of years, and they've really been drivers in making the race a success, so I want to applaud them for helping the Chamber. Shar's a runner, so she really has a lot of wonderful ideas. So I have a little bit more. So in the audience tonight, I have a few new Chamber members. First, I would like to introduce Mike Bender from the new Sprint by Air One Wireless, who's in the audience, who's going to come up and talk about the new business, as well as their big grand opening this weekend.
How are you today?
Good.
Again, like I said, Claire said, my name is Mike Bender. I'm the store manager of the new Air One Wireless, Sprint by Air One Wireless here in Darien at the 75th and Cass Avenue, the Darien, thank you.
Our new Darien Point Plaza, yes.
Thank you, the new plaza, just across from the Brookhaven Market. A little bit about our background of our history, we're a individual company owned, privately owned by David Bender, who happens to be my brother. He started in Naperville around 17 years ago, and now we've grown to over 20 locations, primarily serving the western suburbs of Chicago. We're happy to be here in Darien. We've been looking for a location for quite some time here, and when we found out about the new plaza, we just had to be a part of it. This weekend, we are hosting a grand opening. Of course, Mayor Weaver will be out at 11 o'clock to do a ribbon cutting for us, and we're also featuring a petting zoo from 10:30 to 2:30, so we'd like to invite everybody to come out and enjoy the time. We're going to have free food, some Hawaiian ice, shaved ice, hot dogs, popcorn. We're going to have games, prizes, giveaways. We're going to do Bluetooth giveaways. We're giving away Cub tickets. If anybody's a Cub fan, come on out. We're just proud to be here and very thankful of Claire and all the work that she's put into it. It's a wonderful Chamber, and we're happy to be a part of it. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
The whole community is invited to come on Saturday. Bring the whole family out, bring the kids out. Like you said, there's going to be the petting zoo, some food, some giveaways. At this time, I would like to introduce another new Chamber member, John, and I'm going to butcher your name, so I'm going to have you come up. The name of his company is Clean Slate. He just recently joined the Chamber and just dove right in, my kind of Chamber member. So John, come up here and say your, your name properly for me.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is John. My last name is spelled as C-H-I-O-N-G. You can pronounce it as Cheong.
Cheong, okay.
Cheong.
Okay. Okay, tell them about your business.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. We are delighted to be part of the Chamber. As the name implies, Clean Slate, I used to be in a different industry. I used to be in the pest control industry, but decided to jump onto another industry and, and start the cleaning business. We are excited to work with the Darien Chamber. We'd like to give back to the community, and we hope to grow with the community as well. We do janitorial services, carpet cleaning, air ducts, and we'd like to do it the old school way, you know? No fuss, just your word is your bond. If you need something clean, give us a call. Again, we're excited. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. And John seems to know a lot of people in the community, so we're happy to have him on board, and happy to have Sprint on board, and happy that we were able to give $4,000 out tonight to the Gift of Carl Foundation and Lace School. Any questions?
Thanks, Claire.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And if you, if the Eagle Scouts wouldn't mind coming forward so we can take a photograph of you, and why don't you bring your letters? I, I guess we could just have you come up front here, hold the letters in front of you, I guess, and let, and you will go on the Wall of Fame upstairs, by the way. Okay? All right. Should I stand up here? Wait, okay, all right. I have a few pictures of myself up there. You got the bad power by, what does that mean? So that's, oh, okay. Guys all have a powered by popcorn? Thanks, guys. Gentlemen, you don't have to say if you don't want to, okay? Unless you're working on another badge, I don't know.
After tonight, we may all earn one.
Okay, let's move to the city's clerks, city clerks' report.
I have a couple of items, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
City offices will be closed on Monday, July the 4th, in observance of Independence Day. The July 5 city council meeting has been canceled, and the next city council meeting will be held on Monday, July the 20th.
Thank you. City administrators' report?
No report, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, let's move to department head informations. I believe Chief Thomas wants to go over the may report.
Good evening, everyone. All right. The, a couple of things. The, we had a retirement, two, one retirement and one soon-to-be retirement. Officer Lyska served with the police department for 24 years and retired on March 20. She was involved in a number of different things, dairy officer, juvenile officer, evidence technician, elderly service officer, bike patrol officer, and received a number of commendations and thank yous. So we appreciate her 24 years of service to the city of Darien. Deputy Chief John Cooper has submitted his letter of retirement effective January, or July 28, after dedicating 28 years of service. John was patrol officer, detective sergeant, deputy chief, and he was deputy chief for the last 12 years. So he's a wealth of knowledge that we're losing. He, too, earned a number of different commendations and letters of appreciation throughout his career. There's a couple of things that I'm going to skip. The strategic plan, we're going to talk about in July's council meeting. The organizational structure, we'll talk about it in July meeting. When I was writing the monthly report, it was about the time that the shooting on Orlando happened, so took the opportunity to talk about terrorism and terrorism protection, and specifically with two items in mind. One, if what the Darien Police Department is doing and how we're prepared for such a thing, and we train on And we train on active assailants and responding to those type of situations fairly frequently, actually, in order to be prepared for those type of things. Similar to Walmart, when the Walmart back in December occurred, that was dispatched as a, an active shooter because didn't know what was going on at the time. And so, officers from Darien and a number of surrounding areas responded there, responded there very quickly. And as it turned out, it wasn't an active shooter at all. It was criminal. The enterprise dealing with some upsetness over a drug ripoff that had happened a week earlier. Regardless, it shows that the Darien Police Department can respond to those type of situations very quickly and effectively. So, we appreciate that, that type of behavior. One of the things I think people always wonder is about, what would I do if I was in that situation? And there's an acronym that's put out by the different agencies, some federal agencies. It's just, it's simple. It's run, hide, fight. And the concept is run if you can, fight if you can't, or run if you can, hide if you can't, and fight if you must. And so, obviously, it's in that order. So, you want to create distance. I'm not sure how many marksmen or people that shoot are familiar with weapons. But there's a rear sight and a front sight, and they have to be lined up very closely in order to be accurate with the shooting. And the distance is your friend. So, create distance. If you can't create that distance and get away, then the next opportunity is to hide. And then, where you want to hide is somewhere that's going to stop a bullet. Most construction is not going to stop a bullet, drywall and those type of things. Concrete construction is going to stop a bullet, most bullets. So, get behind something big if you can. And then, fight if you must. And that's one of those things about fight if you must, but fight with what? And fight with all you have. We're not going down without a fight. We've seen that on the train in France. We saw it on airplane on 9/11. We saw it a lot of different times. So, it does happen. I had a form with me with times when there was a person available to fight back. And a lot of times, that number of victims are in the single digits. Those times when there's not anybody fighting back, those are usually those large, large numbers. So, it's important to remember run, hide, fight. And since we're not on that topic, should just, obviously, it's a sorrowful time when we see those type of idiotic and tragic situations happen. So, on to the monthly report. And there's a lot of different statistics. And probably the one that I turn to first and really want to make sure that as a police chief and a person that's in charge of safety in the Darien. So, I always jump to the crime report and part one offenses, part one crime, all the way to the right-hand side. Five-year trend shows that crime is down about 42 and a half percent. And so, that's very good to look at your crime over time, to make sure that you're constantly looking at crime and where you're at, making sure that the community is safe. And certainly indicates that by the crime coming down. And there's a number of other statistical things in there that show different things. But that's the one that I really like to look at. This past week, we had an ugly situation with some kids who decided that it would be fun to go and shoot some other kids with a BB gun. Got lucky and the Page County Sheriff was able to stop the vehicle. And several juveniles were arrested and put into the judicial system because of their behavior. So, that was nice to see the fast response and get those kids taken care of. And so, hopefully, that'll be the start of it and the end of it, all in the same day. And that's all.
How was the victim that was shot in the back of the head?
I haven't gotten a follow-up. I don't believe it penetrated his skin, so I think he's going to be fine.
Okay. And Chief, I did have a question when you mentioned the crime report. On two separate pages, you have part two offenses, two times. What's the difference between those reports? The one is on the first page under crime report, part one offenses. And that's, it says part two offenses. And the next page has part two offenses. The only thing I saw different was the alcohol percent.
I think. I copied and pasted it in two different places and actually pasted in the wrong place. The second page should be listed as part one offenses under the arrest.
Oh, okay.
Flip for one more page. I pasted in the wrong place.
Okay.
I placed it, pasted it in two places. And one was under crime. It shouldn't be there. The correct one is under arrest report.
Okay, the one that's on the separate page should have been under, in the.
Correct. Well, they actually should just be gone because it's on the arrest page.
Okay, gotcha. Gotcha. Thank you. Any questions for the chief?
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Let's, municipal services.
No report, Madam Mayor. More than happy to answer any questions for the council.
I do have a question. What's the status on the light poles?
The light poles are, actually, they were doing some assembling of the light poles today. I'm hoping that tomorrow we start seeing poles going up. My goal, again, when I say my goal, I do mean my goal. So, July 4th is what we're looking for, to be turning them on. I know we're on, we're commed, everything's been arranged with the transformer and powering them up. So, I'm very optimistic for July 4th.
Okay, you've got that issue resolved as to.
The waiver. Yeah.
The waiver. That was, that was kind of crazy, the way that came up.
Correct. And again, also, real quick, is that the lights have to be tested. There's a parameter for testing. And the day before delivery, basically, the contractor came back and said, we need a lighting test. Well, this lighting test was supposed to be performed prior to the lights coming out. And we were able to work with the resident engineer, do a visual and accommodate the request of the federal requirements and not have any jeopardy, not have any funding in jeopardy. So, that's the 30-second synopsis of it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Dan? Let's move to the treasures' report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 161704, the amount of $949,303.34 from the enumerated funds and payroll for the period ended June 9th, the amount of $278,076.92, for a total be approved of $1,227,380.26.
Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower, discussion? Then the roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The warrant has been approved. Let's move to standing committee reports. Alderman Marques.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Earlier this evening, the Municipal Services Committee approved the minutes of the May 23rd, 2016 meeting, and will submit those minutes. And I'd like to announce that the next meeting of the Municipal Services Committee is currently scheduled for July 25th, 2016, here in the council chambers. There is a possibility, though, that we may have a special meeting between now and then. We had a resident who went to planning and zoning several weeks ago and somehow, and was approved. And somehow, that didn't make it to Municipal Services and the changeover between Mike and Steve. So, we may be having something special between now and then.
Okay, thank you. Other police, Alderman MacIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this evening's police committee meeting, we approved the minutes of the May 16th, 2016 police committee. And the next meeting of the police committee will be on Monday, July 18th, 2016, at 6:00 PM in the police department training room across the parking lot. I think, Joanne, did you say the next, the 20th?
I've written down July 20th as the next city council meeting, but.
It's a Wednesday.
Yeah, it's a Wednesday. It's the 18th. So, I just want to make sure.
Oh, I'm sorry. That was the information that was written for me. Thank you.
I missed it. I'm like, that's it?
Correction. Our next city council meeting is July 18th. Okay. Alderman Shower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Our July Admin Finance Meeting has been canceled. And our next Admin Finance Meeting will be held on Monday, August 1st, 2016, at 6:00 PM in our upstairs meeting room.
Thank you. Let's move to questions and comments of gender-related. I don't believe any, the Alderman have questions at this point. But if anyone in the audience wanted to address the city council at this point, please come forward and use the microphone at the podium, please.
My name is Michigan Mezne. I live at 40271st Street. And I just noticed was this thing with the clock tower, the concrete benches, was that in the city budget originally?
It's all donated money.
Okay, then I apologize for even coming here then. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I guess I wasn't going to bring this up until we get into the new business item that that bench represents, which is item E. But since Michigan brought that up, I just wanted to kind of give a little background on that. So, we do have, as you can see on item E, some donations for benches and bike racks and trash can receptacles. And at one point, you know, there was some discussion, I believe it was, came from Alderman Kenny, about some funds that might have been available for, I forgot the exact organization's name, but it had something to do with the Realtors Association. And at that time, you know, we did some research and the way, the way I recall it, that that organization couldn't donate directly to a government body. So, at that point, some of the councilmen that have representation in some of these clubs and organizations reached out and those clubs and organizations did decide to donate the benches. And as far as the rest goes, it's a matter of coordinating now, I believe, with that Realtor Association to see if there's something where, you know, they can contribute to one of these organizations, like the Women's Club or the Lions Club, to reimburse some of that money. But it does, it does get a little tricky because if they're doing that donation, then they would want their name on a plaque. And as far as I know, Dan, you can give us an update of what the plaques may look like and that's feasible.
Sure. And in respect to the plaques, we've accounted for 10 plaques. So, there's really two extra plaques out there. And the reason for that is Walmart has not gotten back to us to let us know that we want to be on a trash receptacle or a bike rack, for example. Obviously, a trash receptacle is probably less popular, to say at least. But regardless, we have three benches. We have two bike racks. So, and again, the goal was to have two plaques per bench, which are eight by eight on a, I believe it was, aluminum or stainless steel type of material. So, and verbiage on there was going to be somewhat the same, was going to be the same formatting, same script. When I say script, there was going to be the donation of, and then whatever from the Lions Club. I know that our former city clerk, Joanne Coleman, asked for something a little more specific. In conjunction with that, we have a Joseph Sadowski also, who is going to be requesting something more specific. Other than that, that's really about it. But the benches were the only ones that were going to have two plaques. And that needs to be confirmed 100%. So, we'll give a proof to everyone prior to ordering them.
Yeah, I think, I think it was a case of, it might have started with Alderman Kenny mentioning the National Association of Realtors wanted to donate money. And then, all of a sudden, the ball started rolling and former clerk, Joanne Coleman, emailed me right away. I want to donate, get a bench. And then, the, all the organizations did. So, it was quite, quite, it was very nice to see the response that we got. And the Sadowski family, they're the family that donated the refrigeration units to Our Lady of Mount Carmel. They're also the ones, the family that donated the greenhouse to Good Works, Inc., over at. So, they're, they really have gone above and beyond. It's all in memory of Mrs. Sadowski, the mother that passed away. So.
And just to add, expand on Alderman to Belkey's comment. I know Alderman Kenny had called me up earlier and asked me a little bit where some of the recognition was for the Realtors. And again, we were, and we, the city could not accept any of the funds. So, while we couldn't accept any of the funds, we thought that he would be reaching out to one of the organizations. And again, we weren't involved with any of the organizations. And as Alderman Belkey stated, then there was the concern of whose name will go on what plaque. And again, the city wasn't getting involved, directly involved with that portion.
Well, if they couldn't, if the Realtors Association couldn't donate directly to the project and they had to funnel their funds through another organization, does that allow them to have their? I mean, do they even, are they even allowed to put their name on a plaque?
I don't know. And that's some of the, you know, call it behind the scenes that the city would not be involved with directly.
Right, okay.
The way I understand it is they did want some recognition.
That's what I thought, yeah. But if they can't, if their association can't do it, then how could they get their name on something?
They couldn't give directly to the city, but they could to the Lions Club or the Women's Club, for example.
Oh, so in association with, okay, something like that. All righty. Thank you. Was there anyone else in the audience that wanted to address the city council? Okay, let's move on to old business. And there being no old business, I'll move right to the consent agenda. We have two items on the consent agenda this evening. The first is to approve an ordinance approving a variation of our Darien zoning ordinance for 7722 Warwick Avenue for the installation of a pool. And for item B was a motion to approve an ordinance approving a final plot of subdivision and variations to our Darien zoning ordinance for bone of beef. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower. The roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The items have been approved. The first item under new business is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a water main easement licensing agreement with DuPage County Forest Preserve District adjacent to 7879 Lamont Road for the warehouse development. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions, comments? The roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The motion has been approved. Item B is a motion to approve a final site plan approval for 7879 Lamont Road Office Warehouse Building. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Shower, discussion? The roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The motion has been approved. Item C is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a private property development stormwater management assistant project for the Portsmouth condominium association along Portsmouth Drive from 8325 Portsmouth to Frontage Road with groundskeeper landscaping care in an amount not to exceed $21,400. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by, was it Alderman Belkey? Did you have your hand up? Alderman Belkey, discussion? The roll, please. Oh, did you want, no, I know. I think you're just going to vote, yeah.
No, just for the record, I, again, this is another private property stormwater project that I oppose that the city is.
Sylvia, your mic's a little high.
Oh, sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, just opposing the private property stormwater projects that the city is supporting the investment on private properties.
Okay. Then the roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
MacIver?
No.
Shower?
Aye.
Five ayes, one nay, and one absent.
The motion has been approved. The next item, item D, is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from. to accept a proposal from Midwest Commercial Painting for the painting of the interior, interior and exterior of Old Lace School in an amount not to exceed $8,885. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower? Any discussion? The roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
When does the project start, Dan?
Approximately three weeks.
In three weeks?
Yes.
Okay. Dean Rodkin is in the audience, so I'm sure that's information she would like to have. All right, item E is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Belson Outdoor Products for the clock tower located at Plainfield Road and Cass Avenue in an amount not to exceed $8,082.47 for three concrete benches, two concrete bike racks, and three trash can receptacles. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Belkey? The roll, please. Oh, I, I'm sorry, any discussion?
Mayor, would you, maybe if you could just, again, for the audience, let them know that this is not money that the city's spending on this, on both items.
You're good. Yes, Mr. Mezney came up to ask a question about that, but as it turns out, when a discussion started about, could I possibly, could we possibly donate funds to improve the, the look of that, our clock tower? It became a rolling ball, and we had numerous organizations volunteer funds to buy the items that we are talking about this evening. So this was not money that was in our city council, our budget. And it's not money that's coming out of our city council budget, so. The roll, please.
Belzak?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The resolution has been approved. Item F is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a proposal from Architectural Bronze and Aluminum Corporation for the plaques that will go on these items under the clock tower in an amount not to exceed $1,640. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marques, seconded by Alderman Shower? Any discussion? The roll, please.
Marques?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Six ayes, one absent.
The motion has been, the resolution has been approved. And then item G is a motion to authorize Season Comfort Corporation to perform the emergency repairs to the police department's HVAC, HVAC system in an amount not to exceed $7,250. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Belkey and Alderman Shower? Has the work already been done, Dan?
Yes.
Okay. I, I would guess that's the reason, it was an emergency.
Well, in all seriousness, Mayor, typically, the authority of staff is 5,000, so if we would've had that emergency repair, obviously, something like this compressor, if you let it go any longer, you could burn out other, other components. So we, and a few instances like this, we take care of the work, and at the next council meeting, we'll come back for formal approval, yes.
Okay. Any discussion? We didn't take the roll on this one.
Not yet.
Okay, the roll, please.
Belkey?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Six ayes and one absent.
Let's move to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Do any of the Aldermen have, I saw an email passing by about, some of us haven't sent in our paperwork for the Lions Club parade. Does, I'm, will be putting in mine tomorrow, I'm always late doing, I'm sorry. But are any of the Aldermen not participating?
Be out of town.
Okay, Alderman MacIver, so have you let the Lions Club know? Okay, all right, very good. Okay, is there any questions, comments, and announcements from the audience? Please come on up forward.
Mayor and council, I'd just like to address for one quick moment. My name is Marilyn Steffel, 2706 Whitlock Drive in Darien. And just express as a board member of the association the grave concerns that many of our residents have over the warehouse development. We've appreciated very much Dan's response to us in really working and helping our concerns about sound, proximity, fumes to be addressed by the developer. And really, also, his work that he's gonna be doing tomorrow with Nycor. And some of us will be present to support on that. We just wanna make sure we're heard, we wanna make sure that things go well for our development. We take pride in being here in Darien in our homes, and we want it to continue to be as thriving of an opportunity for all of us in our property values and in the things that are important to all of our residents. So we just want to make sure that you understand our concerns, and we appreciate your support.
Well, and you know that even though this, you know, this development's been approved, you never stopped being allowed to communicate with us. So going forward, as the project moves along, please feel free to contact staff members or all, any of us.
Thank you, we will.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience want to address the council? Then I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn. Alderman MacIver, seconded by Alderman Shower? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.